I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of April 13th, 2020. It is 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. We will now take a roll call. Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Mullen. Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Okay. Mayor Pro-Tam Pearson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. All right. Do we have any public comments on closed session items?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. We will now recess to closed session to discuss the item listed on the closed session agenda. We will rejoin this teleconference at 6:30 PM to begin the regular session.
Thank you.
Do you have a slide, Alex?
Yes, give me one second.
Jefferson, Mikey, you guys are leaving, right?
Make sure you guys switch to the other one.
Okay.
All right, I'm taking up.
Jefferson, the leave meeting button is on your bottom right.
Okay.
Thanks, Kelsey.
I hit leave meeting.
I hit leave meeting.
2020. It is 6:38 PM. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, thank you. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this screen, hello? At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the item if you follow the instructions on the screen under the "Sign Up to Speak" tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. You must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Councilmember Wagner.
Mayor Proton Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Ferrer.
Here.
You have a question?
Thank you. May I have a report on the closed session, please?
Sure. At 6 o'clock PM, the city council met on recess to close session for the item listed on the agenda. All council members were present remotely through the Zoom application and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner. Mayor Proton Pearson.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. Okay, may we please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 10th, 2020.
Thank you, Heather. And I would like to move that we adjourn in memory of John Bell. Okay, moving to item 1A, we will have a staff update on COVID-19.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and all the members of the public who are watching. I hope everybody has been staying well and healthy at home. City Hall, as everybody knows, has been closed for coming up on a month now, and we are taking our direction and the orders that are happening as we get them from the county and the state. As everybody knows, a stay-at-home order was issued first by the county and then by the state of California, and that is what the city of Malibu is under. Just like in any kind of disaster that we have, whether it's a fire or anything else, the city falls under the purview of the county. So in this particular disaster, the orders are coming out of the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and that is the messaging and orders that we are falling under from the city. So many people have heard there's a new order that was just issued on Friday regarding masks. Again, that was an order that was issued by the County Public Health Department, and the requirement is effective by midnight this Wednesday, April 15th. All essential businesses must provide masks for their employees and employees must wear them while they're in that place of business, and any member of the public that is going into a business that is essential must also wear a mask. So I just want to clarify that that order, while we encourage people to start it now, actually won't be in effect until the end of the evening on Wednesday. We are in the middle of doing messaging with local businesses and essential businesses to make sure they're aware of that. They also need to post what their social distancing plan is, so we're trying to make sure getting out ahead of that, that people who have businesses that are open are aware of those requirements. And then on Thursday, we'll start following back up with staff to make sure that that's all been complied with. But that being said, any enforcement of that new order will actually have to have be taken out by the Sheriff Department, just like any of the other orders, the beach clothes or whatnot. If there are people defying those orders, that enforcement comes from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, not specifically the city. So just wanted to share that. The phones at City Hall are being answered every day. We also have the ability to forward those phones in the event that we can't be there. We can answer them remotely. The majority of our city staff is now working remotely from home. We are operating our emergency operations center. It is fully opened, but again, it is being run remotely. Good news, bad news, that we got a lot of experience during Woolsey on how to do that, and we were probably ahead of the curve in terms of what other cities have had to face in getting up and running and working remotely. So we are sending out messaging twice a day, 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM is the protocol that we're following. This weekend, we moved to sending out just one message on Saturday and one message on Sunday, and that will be the format that we'll be following from here on out, unless, of course, there's something that happens in between those times. We'll certainly message those out. And since early March, we have shared over 2,000 messages, and that's a combined number between all of our social media channels, the Everbridge Reverse 911 system, and our email website advisory system. So that's a pretty impressive number for a very small city to have sent out 2,000 messages. We have used our wireless emergency alert system once. Again, that's the system that comes through every cell phone that's within the area of Malibu, like an Amber Alert, and we are prepared, if we need to do that again, to do that once more. We try to use that only for very critical messaging, but again, that does reach our visitor population, so we feel that that's an important way to communicate with them. Our CERT has been incredibly helpful and engaged. They have, since March 16th, provided us with over 250 hours of volunteer services. They're doing things like every day, they've been helping post written bulletins on all of the grocery store windows. That's a repeat of messaging that we're putting out on all the other channels, but we wanted to make sure that we were getting that messaging out to people who may not be tech savvy or may not be looking at their computers or phones to get that. They also have been assisting with traffic control at the City Hall testing site. And a little more on that, we last week partnered with Core Community Organization Relief Effort and Malibu Medical with Dr. Lisa Benya to provide a drive-through testing site that is a nasal swab test that are being provided. We provided 1,197 tests last week, and as of 9:00 AM this morning, and we're still getting the results back in, but the results that we have as of now were that they found 23 positive cases, nine of which were Malibu residents who tested positive. So the organization and the doctor's office are following up with the results of that. We are able to do another round of testing next week, and that will start on Wednesday, the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, again, offering the nasal swab testing drive-through at City Hall. Pre-registration is required, and that is all available on the city's website. I've had a lot of questions about the antibody tests. What I'm understanding is there's not a lot of them available, and the ones that are may not always be the best one. So we're looking at trying to do an antibody drive-through testing site, but that probably won't be for a few weeks. But it is something I know there's interest in. And as far as what I've been doing, I have been participating pretty much daily briefings on all the different levels between the county, the different departments in the county, the state, the Office of Emergency Services. There's regular briefings from the White House. The Sheriff Department has regular briefings, and I've been on regular calls with all of our neighboring cities, participating on a twice-weekly call with our Westside City partners and our Cog City partners, also speaking with them at least once a week, as well as with our sheriff station, and then coordinating the efforts of the Emergency Operations Center and staff and everything else that's going on. So I know it's been a surreal time for all of us, and particularly for me, trying to make sure that staff is happy and working and keeping the needs of the city in mind while we can't see each other, but we're all doing our very best, and I hope everyone in the community is staying well. I have some more updates that I'll give as part of my regular update area. If there's no questions on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Anyone have any questions? Okay, then we should be moving on to item 2C.
2A. Mayor.
Excuse me?
You wanted to be on item 2A.
Oh, I'm sorry, Heather. Excuse me. I mean 2A. Okay, thank you. Um, excuse me.
You want to listen?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. One second.
So Mayor, we're going to do the communications from the public.
Items not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. We have, I know we have some public speakers on items not on the agenda.
Yes, so we have 12, and I'm going to list them in the order that they'll be called. Norman Haney, Amy, Amish Patterson, Scott Dietrich, Barry Alderman, Carrie Kim, Craig Hill, Marnie Kamen, Michael Lustig, Chris Frost, Laura Eaton, and Howard Redd. He looks like Barry's in there twice, so I'm going to remember that. Okay. So first, we'll have Norm Haney.
Let you on. Okay, you can, there, wait, they're not letting you.
Okay, you can, there, wait, they're not letting you speak, but you, you ask if they can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead, Norm.
Okay, I, Carrie Kim hung around to, to give me an extra minute. So I'll start off with, good evening.
Wait, Norm, we're not doing any seating right now, so you'll just get three minutes.
Oh, that's exciting. Let me move forward then as quickly as I possibly can. Good evening, council members. I'm, I'm calling in because I understand that when you have a project that requires a development agreement and a zone change in an overlay district, that it's, it's important for the city council to chime in and direct the planning staff, the planning department, to move forward with the project. And I've been working on the hotel project at the Old Shell Gas Station and the, and the office building that's above that for four years now. The first six months was to do some testing with planning commissioners and city council members and staff members to see if they thought that they could support it. There's no reason to move forward if you don't feel like there's a chance that it can be approved. So after that, I filed the application three and a half years ago, and I've been working diligently to get it before the city council since then. The city council then theoretically will direct the, the planning department how to proceed. The project has a lot of positives. First of all, it's in the proper location. It's in the most dynamic and vibrant visitor-serving commercial district in the entire city. There are a lot of positives with it. One, it eliminates a visual blight adjacent to the most traveled scenic highway in the entire city. The first 24 feet will be landscaped, except for the driveways. And the actual buildings will be set back 46 and a half feet from the right-of-way. Now, this is, this is the greatest setback of any commercial building within 1,000 feet to the, to the east and 1,000 feet to the west. So some of the positive things about the project is that it actually reduces traffic on PCH. It increases the safety element on PCH, reduces congestion, just a whole lot of positive things. One of the most important things, however, is that the TOT, Transient Occupancy Tax, will deliver approximately $1 million a year to the city. Plus, the property tax will increase on the two parcels involved approximately 400%. In addition to that, when the building permits are issued, there will be a grant to the city of $400,000. The project also is the best alternative to the Airbnbs, which are actually destroying the quiet residential neighborhoods in many of Malibu's communities.
Norm?
Yes?
That's your three minutes.
I'm asking for the city council to put it on the agenda at the second, at the second meeting in April. It was supposed to be on in March, the first meeting. The second meeting was canceled. This is the first meeting in April. I really would appreciate it if you could go on the second meeting in April. Thank you for listening. Stay safe.
Thank you, Norm.
Our next speaker is Hamish Patterson.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, everybody. I, I, I just really wanted to participate in this meeting more than anything. And I really, I really want to commend the city and all the council members, and especially you, Riva, for your constant updates and your diligent work. And it's been a great comfort to me and my family. And I really just, I'm, I have nothing but good things to say about all the work you've done on this, through this situation that we're all going through together. And the one thing I wanted to bring up was, is, is the terminology, "social distancing", while we're being required to physically distance ourselves approximately six feet. I noticed our governor's began to switch the languaging himself. And I think it would be something to look into about switching that languaging because human beings, in their very essence, are social creatures. And I think that we found that being in communication with each other, while it's why, just like we are tonight, is very important for maintaining morale and keeping people away from depression. And I think when we see a lot of just social distancing out there, it sends a message that may be somewhat subliminal that, about being social. And I think at this time, we need to find ways to be more social than ever while maintaining our physical distancing. And I just think that that's an important word to change. And I know you're getting a lot of your stuff from the county and the state. But I just wanted to refer to Governor Newsom's also begun to refer to this as physical distancing versus the social distancing. And with that said, I just hope that when we come out of this whole thing, we have a bigger engagement from our community with the, with our public institutions. Because as we've seen, our public institutions have a great amount of power over our daily lives. And I hope that everyone takes this opportunity to truly engage with their, with their civic obligations. And everyone in America has a civic obligation to engage in their city government. And with that said, I really just want to commend the city one more time and say that, you know, in our family, we've kept all of you in our prayers, and we know that you all have an overwhelming job, especially balancing out the needs of the public versus the safety of the public, which I imagine is a very difficult situation, especially in light of we're a very outdoors community and we're in all these jurisdictions. And again, I just want to thank you for all your time and dedication because you have really shown that you rebounded from the, the situation with Woolsey Fire and have truly handled the situation with, with grace and poise. And, and my heart's out to you, and my prayers are out to you. And I just, I madly respect how you guys have been handling this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hamish.
We'll have Scott Dietrich.
First, a big shout out to the city staff, Riva, Susan, Jerry, Sarah, and Jesse and everybody else who participated in poor testing. At times, we were totally overwhelmed, but we got through it, we made it work, and the staff did a great job. Secondly, we do need to get Norm's Hotel on the agenda. As you may know, I'm not pro-development, but this is a good project. You all know about it. So let's push that onto the agenda as Norm requested. Third, Malibu is a small city, but said, excuse me, is a small city, but we have a big presence, much larger than the numbers would suggest. We need to use that influence to end this ridiculous shutdown. We stopped, we quarantined. Why? To flatten the curve. But that was based on 240,000 deaths. Well, we now know those figures were wildly inflated. They're now less than 60,000. In 2016, 21,000 people died regular food. But we are in danger of ruining our economy for years if we do not stop this. And we need to use our influence to smartly reopen. There is no reason that we can't reopen beaches and parks and trails now. We've got to do it smart. We can't be overwhelmed like we were the week after we banned parking at all, and we had too many cars. But if we do not get this city, this county, this state up and running again, the consequences, the medical consequences, the suicides, the abuse of kids, alcohol abuse, it's, it's going to be terrible. And I just want to point out, because you'll see some conflicting figures. I don't know where Mayor Garcetti gets 3 million people. Look at the Diamond Princess. It was a perfect incubator for the virus. A gentleman got on, he was already sick from the virus. There was 3,700 people on that boat. They tested everyone. It sat for 10 days outside San Francisco when they finally docked it in Oakland. It ended up eight people died, 680 approximately had the virus. But eight people out of 3,700 in a perfect incubation setting, that is 0.02, 0.2%. We need to end this folly now, but smartly. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Scott, Barry Haldeman.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. First of all, I just wanted to thank the, the city staff and the council for really stepping up to this situation where it's extremely unusual and it's not been easy. And we appreciate everything you're doing. I'm going to talk about something not directly having to do with the coronavirus, but indirectly, just to put it on the record. There was a meeting of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy a week ago, Friday, Monday. And the agenda for it came out the Friday before. And then on Saturday night, an emergency agenda came out, and it had in it a provision to be voted on that provide Executive Director Joe Edmondson would have total control during the, the coronavirus of what the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy would do. In other words, he had the ability, and under the thing that was on the agenda, to, to modify, suspend, or postpone grant guidelines, contract conditions, and other rules and regulations of the Business Affairs of the Conservancy. In other words, the Advisory Committee and the, the committees that have to approve what he does were suspended. That was basically voted in. And it's particularly interesting because on the same agenda was an $8.1 million grant to the MRCA for mediation of, of damage from the Woolsey Fire. And at one point, I asked Mr. Edmondson, I said, well, let me understand one thing. If you make this grant today, which they did, tomorrow, if the MRCA, which he also runs, turned around and said to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, "We really need this $8 million for more money, like to fight the Sycamore Canyon situation", you would have the ability to agree to that, even though the grant specified that it had to go to the mountains. And there was a long pause, and he just said simply, "Mr. Haldeman, you're wrong." Didn't say why I was wrong. So I want to call the attention of the council to this and everyone else. And I would suggest strongly that we write a letter to both Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and to Joe's supposed boss, Mr. Crowfoot in, in Sacramento, as well as ask our lobbyists to make people aware of this power grab because now he has total control of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. I think that's against everything that we believe in. It's particularly hurtful to Malibu because we know how he's treated Malibu. And I think we're, it's a dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Next, we'll have Carrie Kim.
I think that Carrie was the person that had wanted to give their time to Norm.
Craig Hill.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hope you and your families are all doing okay. And Riva, thanks for the updates. Council, thank you for the ordinances for second reading tonight. "In my letter to you, I pointed out that sequestration must last longer than many people are ready to accept. I'll remind you that my mother's an epidemiologist, my sister's a virologist, so I grew up with this stuff at the breakfast table. Flattening the curve is only a first step, which the feds are barely looking beyond. And until there's a vaccine, getting to herd immunity at 60 to 70% infection could cost more lives than the feds will admit, millions of lives, if the best estimates of a 2% to 3% infection rate are even remotely accurate. So if you think you're already seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, you're seeing a train. The economy is likely to do worse if open too soon, as infections would return in waves, battering businesses like Set Waves pounding on duck-diving surfers one after another. It's way too soon to say China or South Korea have needed, and they instituted full lockdowns, whereas in the US, 30 states plan to lift restrictions in two weeks, guaranteeing that the curve will be protracted. Until we have herd immunity, federal wage support is necessary, whether it's called stimulus, UBI, or Social Security for all. This war effort will look like socialism, which means it will be resisted by Trump world, even while they support socialism for banks and oil companies. So we're heading for a showdown between the feds and the smart states, politically and in the courts. The states should be producing a coordinated policy to achieve herd immunity with comprehensive testing and tracing and a model for federal financial support. The public needs to be hearing that policy as an antidote to Trump's daily harangue. It will be a battle for hearts and minds, and the messaging should be handled by professionals. Whatever that is, Malibu can help. With all our celebrities and millionaires, we have a great concentration of messaging capability. The task is to coordinate the celebrity power with the multi-state policy effort. Council members, you can help facilitate that. There's a role for the Malibu Foundation. Everyone from Miley Cyrus to Dick Van Dyke, Rob Reiner's a bright guy. We should rope in Nashville to reach folks in red states. And whomever in Malibu is closest to Governor Newsom should be leaning on his desk right now. The result might look like a modern version of "We Are the World", maybe a TikTok meme. And I don't know, that's for the media pros to work out. But the message, patience, distancing is necessary until we have a vaccine or until we have a testing regime robust enough to allow those with antibodies to go back to work. Until then, the feds should be providing the safety net, not pulling the rug out from under us all prematurely. So I hope to hear how each of you have been playing matchmaker among your most high-powered contacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now have Marnie Kamen.
Do you guys hear me?
We can.
Oh, hi. So I'm here to speak. I don't, I haven't heard anyone speak on this, but I went to mail something near the library in that mailbox. I hadn't been out in forever. And it looks like Tent City there. It's, it's probably at an all-time worst of people. It looks like there's a giant sleepover party going on amongst our homeless. And my biggest concern is how, how none of them are sort of have masks on. Maybe some of them have bandanas around their mouth. They're all kind of just hanging out with each other, probably infecting each other. And then a neighbor told me that their three meals a day are being served by CART to the homeless people that are living there, and that homeless people are bussing in from other cities to get these free meals from CART. And so they're congregating. And I, I'm just, I'm at a loss for how the city is allowing this to happen. They're giving $1,000 tickets to surfers for going into the ocean alone with maybe one other person 100 feet away from them. I can't walk my dog without a mask. And I can't have a playdate with my daughter and another kid at the Bluffs Park. Yet it's somehow being allowed that, that there can feed the homeless in this really unhygienic way during a pandemic. I don't know how that's happening. Once again, the homeless people are not being held to the same standards as the rest of us, and they're allowed to do things. I would like to hold CART, the organization, to some standards since I imagine those are not homeless people, those volunteers. And I'd like to know why that's being allowed to happen three times a day, every day. I can't go on a bike ride by there, but they can all congregate and basically have a party. I'd also like to know why the city seems to be holding off on putting those signs for the RVs not to be parking along the PCH. for the RVs not to be parking along the PCH, the signs that say they can't park in the night, why those haven't been put up. And I have, some people have texted me pictures. I can't text you pictures, but it literally, it looks like a giant party in the lot by the public library. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention, ask what you guys are going to do to ameliorate that situation. It's the fact that they're coming on buses from other cities, bringing this, causing harm to our community. I'd like to also just say that the people that run CART, those volunteers are the most, in my opinion, self-indulgent, selfish people to be bringing this kind of harm to our community. It's not helping anyone. No study ever done has said that feeding homeless people helps them not be homeless. I'm sure they need other things and doctor's appointments, clothes, jobs, haircuts. Okay, but yeah, maybe you guys can comment on that.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Michael Lustig.
Me?
Yep.
Am I there?
You are. Go ahead.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Okay. First, I'd like to speak up on behalf of Norm Haney. And I would love to see his hotel project on the agenda ASAP. I think it's really important in light of the pending restrictions on short-term rentals. Now, you guys voted on five zero, a hundred and thirty-two days ago to adopt a similar version, similar ordinance to the Santa Monica HSO. I met with staff at the end of December and again on February twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth. And on both occasions, the staff was unable to produce even one sentence of a draft. So afterwards, I submitted written comments to both staff and the public record, which are exactly the same as the study sheet I gave each of you when we met ahead of the December third meeting. So that's the provisions. It's super simple. We need to get that done and we need to get that on the agenda. It was supposed to be at Planning Commission on March thirtieth, but that was canceled. So what we'd like to see is Norm's hotel on the agenda as soon as possible. And we'd like to see the draft of Planning Commission as soon as possible. And that's it. I'm going to make it super short. Those are the things I think you, you guys get the drift. Thank you so much. And you guys all look great. I'm glad you're healthy and well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Chris Frost.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you tonight? First, I'd like to thank Riva, all the council members, Susan Duiness, Jerry, Sarah, all the city staff, CIR, the VOPs. I could go on and on. I've got a list that's a whole page long here for all of their efforts doing this. I believe that being on the front lines and protecting the citizens in our city is probably our most important responsibility and duty. And I know every one of you that I can see on the screen there take it very seriously. Most of you I've talked to throughout this this ordeal that we're having, and I have never heard anybody waver once from the decision to make this the most important thing going on and to try to get this thing under control and keep our city safe. And I want to thank you also for acknowledging John Bell. He was my neighbor for decades. I don't even remember how many decades, more than I've been around, I believe. But thank you for doing that. And I want to reiterate, I think Haney had made a very good point about not calling it social distancing. I believe he's right. Physical distancing is probably the right term for it. Also, Dr. Harris asked me to read the following because he couldn't get, he couldn't figure out how to get his audio started on there. So he said he tried to get on the meeting to speak, but only got access to the meeting and no instructions on how to address. The following is what he wanted to say. We should have the sheriff enforce no parking on PCH and inform the public that they should wear masks in all public places like parking lots. South Korea and Japan have done this relatively well with this strategy. So I want to elaborate quickly on that and then I'm going to let you move on here. I kind of feel like if we don't enforce the law, if we don't tell these people, basically, it's a thousand dollar fine, then basically it's like when you tell a child you're going to take his toy away from him and then you don't, well, then they've got you. And this is what I believe we're seeing on the beaches and in the public right now. If you look at some of the VOP logs from this week, you'll see that they'll run twenty people off the rocks in the beach at Las Tunas. They'll write all of them parking tickets, come back twenty minutes later, and there'll be twenty more cars there. I believe if somebody were to get on a bullhorn and say, all of you have been ticketed and you have thirty seconds to get out of here, or then you're going to have a thousand dollar fine. And little news media to follow that up, I believe that will stop a lot of the people coming out from other areas that are causing us a lot of grief at this time. And thank you to all of you. You all look healthy up there. And, and I'm hoping that we get through this rather quickly. And Dr. Harris says kudos to all the city and all their public efforts so far. And we need to do more on, in honor of John Bell. So thank you. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Laura Eaton. Laura Eaton. Okay, next we'll hear from Howard Redsky.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. First, I wanted to thank Riva, the city council and the staff. I can't imagine how much of a trying time it is between your families, your kids and the city, and I think you guys are doing an outstanding job. You've returned my phone calls, emails, and it's greatly appreciated. So my wife and I just want to say thank you and you guys are doing a great job. And I just want to send a shout out to the guys that work, guys and girls that work at Ralph's that give me food and Whole Foods and all the other people in the city that are helping us get through this. And with all of us together, we'll win this thing and hopefully it's sooner than later. That's all I got.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakerless mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we will move on to item two B. And that is commission, committee and city manager update. Do we have any commission or committee update?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Riva, do you have a city manager update?
I do, and I obviously will be some crossover to the update that I provided on COVID nineteen. Thank you to all the members of the public who thanked our staff. The city staff has really gone above and beyond. As local government employees, we are all disaster workers, which means that regardless of what the disaster is, we are required to work and help our community and our city staff has embraced that assignment, putting their own families aside, even people with children coming into city hall. Obviously, we're taking all the precautions that we can. City Hall for in there has been cleaned regularly. We are all wearing masks and gloves. But it means a lot to everybody who's out there on the frontline, so thank you for acknowledging them. I wanted to just touch on a couple of things that were brought up by speakers. One regarding the agenda first for this meeting. This was obviously our first go at doing a virtual meeting and so the agenda is light. See how it all worked and how our public could get used to it. I'm hesitant, and the mayor and I have talked about this, of adding robust items to a virtual meeting because of the challenge for the public to participate. And so items that would require, you know, fifty, a hundred speakers, I think are best to be done when we're all together and no longer, no longer having to physical distance. I think also none of us really know how long this is going to be going on. And so when we set this agenda, I think there was a hope that we would have some, some normalcy in a few weeks. And obviously, we learned last week that that won't be happening. So we'll certainly look at that. There were items that, that are ready to go and I think just best to be heard in live time. Work, I didn't touch during my COVID update about the homeless situation. Obviously, it's of great concern to both the city of Malibu and pretty much everywhere in the state of California. There are a lot more resources and shelter places that have been stood up as part of this disaster. Our outreach workers, our sheriffs are working constantly to try and encourage those who are experiencing homelessness in Malibu to take advantage of those shelter opportunities. Some are more willing than others. I personally have seen the, the folks who are in the library parking lot and have asked for daily multiple times throughout the day patrols, including foot patrols by our sheriff to make sure that they are also following the physical distancing requirements and will continue to do so. Regarding the signs along Pacific Coast Highway, those need to get a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission. The California Coastal Commission canceled their April meeting. And so anything that was supposed to be in April is now in May and everything that would have been in May is now in June. And so there's going to be a delay in some of the items that we have before the commission. But we are doing everything we can to move those forward. And with that being said, you know, it's definitely a time where we're trying to balance out addressing the need of the community during a disaster, pandemic, the health and safety of our community and our staff, keeping regular business going on while we're doing all these other things like running our emergency operations center. So our planning staff, for the most part, is working completely remotely. They did hold a planning commission meeting last week. There'll be another one next week. And what they're doing is working on current applications that we have in the queue and rebuild applications. Our code enforcement staff is also working mostly in the field, doing their regular duties, but then also educating those members that they come across in the community about the need for the distancing and they'll be starting to talk about the masks that need to be worn. Some of the other regular duties that are continuing are the water quality monitoring, all of our solid waste recycling functions, all of the mandated reports that we need to do pretty much throughout the city, our environmental health department and our onsite wastewater treatment system. Processes are still working and going on as normal and our permit. Our public work staff have been working pretty much nonstop. First of all, to manage all of the city's infrastructure and facilities. But they've also been working to monitor everything going on with the rain events that we've had. We've had significant rain over the last few weeks. And they were maintaining twenty-four hour crews multiple days in a row to make sure that the city streets were open and safe. And so I thank them for taking time away from the safety of their homes to serve our community. We are at this time only going to be holding planning commission meetings and city council meetings. All other regular city meetings have been canceled. Originally, we had just canceled them through March and then, of course, now through April. And if it looks like the new order is through May fifteenth at this time, those meetings will remain canceled until May fifteenth. Our community services department, if you haven't seen it yet, please take a look at the virtual recreation programs that they've come up with. We came up with this idea to offer some virtual rec programs and I had in my mind that it would be a couple of our recreation teachers teaching a few classes online and they have gone above and beyond that and just came up with amazing online programs available on Channel Three. You can do pretty much anything to entertain yourself, whether you're a child all the way up to, to any age. And they'll now be starting something called Malibu Mondays, which is a new series that will work with the Virtual Recreation Center. And it'll feature a different activity and program each week. So please look at the city's website, get more information on that. And then we've also been making sure that our senior community is well and taken care of during this time. City staff has been personally calling seniors multiple times a week to make sure that they are doing okay, they don't need anything. Our dial-a-ride service is still working where you can get rides to doctor's offices and grocery stores. Meals on Wheels is working and there's also meals available through several of the local nonprofit organizations. But we, if you haven't heard from us and you need something, please call the city and let us know. We're here to help you. We're here to make sure that you're okay while you're at home. Couple of things that also happened during this time, we took advantage of the minimal traffic and the fact that schools closed and we were able to complete the Civic Center Way Storm Drain Repair Project. So that turned into a bit of a blessing to be able to complete that without any impact to Webster Score OLM. And the temporary skate park surfacing project, that's the asphalt part of the temporary skate park, will be starting, actually started today, and we're looking at a completion of that in early May. You'll hear more about the temporary skate park project later in the agenda. Assuming that item will be discussed, if not, I'm happy to talk about that. And then a couple of other things, one, our rebuild statistics, because obviously we are still extremely worried about making sure that our rebuild projects are moving along. First, I want to make sure that anybody who is not aware of it, that there is the possibility to extend your insurance deadlines. There's an additional twelve months available if you ask for it. That information, again, is on the city's website, but this is really good news for those of you who are worried about your deadlines. We at this time have approved two hundred and twenty-three applications through planning for rebuild projects and the majority of those are the like-for-like plus ten percent. We are reviewing plans that have been approved by planning into building and safety. And since we started working remotely, we've approved eleven new rebuild permits and we bring our total to ninety-three permits that have been issued. We have seven pending. So hopefully those will get done this week, bringing the number of approved projects with building plans to one hundred. And we do have our building and safety staff actually working at city hall by appointment only, reviewing plans, issuing permits, not just for rebuilds, but for regular projects as well. And in the past month, they've issued about a hundred and seventy-five other permits. And our building inspectors continue to provide building inspections, which are available during the week. And then lastly, but probably the most important, is that we are now in the process of developing our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And what started out about six weeks ago as pretty feel-good project because it looked like we had rebounded pretty successfully from the Woolsey Fire. Much to my surprise, revenues were strong and I was really looking forward to being able to go into presenting our budget with some really good news and then this whole pandemic struck. And so unfortunately, it will take a big hit to our revenue for still every day learning new things that are being impacted. But we're looking probably somewhere between two, about two million dollars down this year in revenue and somewhere closer to another three million to four million dollars down next year. So it's significant and we are doing everything we can to trim things down so that we're able to present a balanced budget. And we're hoping still to have that presentation to the city council special meeting on Wednesday, April twenty. So I just wanted to be forward, just like other cities, this has taken its toll on us, but I'm hoping that, like we always do, we get through this. And again, just want to reiterate that I am here for every resident in whatever way that you need. And the city staff is here. Please call us, please email us, please text us, whatever you need. We're here to help. So thank you.
Thank you, Riva. Okay, we will now go to council member reports. Rick, do you have a report?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, just, just a few comments. John Bell, thank you very much for recognizing him. He was my next door neighbor in Paradise Cove. Very nice man. His family is very nice, very hardworking, always had a smile on his face and tragic loss for the city of Malibu. So thank you for recognizing him this evening. I was there on the first day for the testing evolution at the city and I had And I have to say, I was super impressed with how well everything was organized by the city. And I was there right when it started and everything was completely set up. Everyone was in place, had everything coned off. And it was working like clockwork right from the beginning. I was very impressed. And I know a lot of work went into thinking that whole system through. And there are a lot of people who stood out there in the rain for the next few days and did a great service to the community. It's very nice of Sean Penn and his organization to put up the money for that. And Dr. Benya and everybody who was out there and all the city staff worked really hard. I was very impressed. And I think that was a wonderful evolution that's still going on this week. Hamish, very nice comments. It's nice for you to say that Scott, Dietrich and Craig, I think that you're both of your positions on the road forward represent the two extremes. And somewhere between those two extremes is the route ahead. And everyone's going to be talking about that. Homeless comments are were very important too. And thank you for addressing that, Riva. And the other big issues that people talked about, we're going to have to figure out how to how to do those going forward, the hotel and the short term rentals. And we can't put those off too long, but we want to make sure that everyone gets to participate in those decisions. Those are big decisions. So it's not that everyone's blowing that off, but we're going to navigate that going forward in the most intelligent manner. And Riva, thanks for steering a steady course for the city and doing such a great job communicating with the public. And the staff is doing a phenomenal job. I think from my perspective, I think all the governmental agencies, whether it's the city, the county, the state and the federal government are doing a really good job of communicating with the trying to get information out to everybody and navigating this sort of unknown route ahead. So thank you and all of your staff for doing a wonderful job and and for eliminating the challenges with the budget going ahead. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Skylar, do you have a report?
I do. I probably mostly second most of what Rick said and just want to give my condolences to Sandy, Jimmy and Billy. Mr. Bell's closer part of his family. And I want to thank our community for, for the most part, being very respectful of the stay at home orders, the physical distancing. And I think that our community is doing a very good job of that. I think there's frustration from a lot of people, even this past weekend with the amount of traffic and stuff on the highway and people driving out to Malibu to just go around or you see a lot of people in the parking lot. But I know that our, we're, our community is all in this for the long haul. It's not easy for everyone. And I just want to give a shout out to all the parents at home with their kids. And, you know, I think you're all doing an amazing job. I know that's not easy. And thank Riva and all of our city staff for all the hard work and extra hours that they're putting in. Everyone that was involved, Dr. Benya with the the testing and ongoing testing that's going to happen again later in the week. Very grateful for that. And hopefully we can, we'll all get through this sooner than later and things will return to a bit of normalcy out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Jefferson, do you have a report?
We can't hear you. You need to unmute. Heather, can you unmute him?
No. Jefferson, on the lower left, there's a microphone and if you click on that, it'll unmute you. While he's doing that, I just wanted to jump back in, Mayor, if I may. I neglected to thank Susan Duenias, our public safety manager, who has been working seven days a week around the clock, taking care of everything that we need for the community. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank her. I forgot to do that in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to move on to Mikey and then we'll try and get Jefferson on the phone and see what can help him?
Okay, sure. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to start by thanking all the speakers. We hear you, every one of you on what you're saying. I kept copious notes and want to appreciate everyone that also has gotten ahold of me personally, email, text, phone. There's a lot going on. So thank you. I don't know what you're feeling or thinking if you don't tell me. So I do appreciate all the outreach. It really does make a difference. It really does matter. And in general, I agree. I think Skylar said it, but I want to thank the citizens of Malibu for overall doing a really, really good job of staying safer at home. And it's, it's hard and it takes a commitment, especially we all have the rest of our lives. We all have our
Click on unmute.
We can hear you now, Jefferson.
Yeah, all of a sudden they can hear him. Can you hear him?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
I'll be brief. Once again, I've seen how our community bonded through this turmoil. All the comments that were made this evening were splendid and have merit. My one comment is to everybody that's driving down PCH and in their home, in their home areas is to slow down. The speeds I'm seeing are disappointing. When you're in your cocoon, doesn't mean that you can't respect the speed limits posted plus five, stay alive. I'll get into other comments further on into the agenda. Wanted to thank several speakers for their comments about Norm's Hotel. That remodel there would really benefit our city for that lost revenue that we're having. So when we can, we'll get that on the agenda. We don't have to do the details. But we've got to put something forward like that. It gives us a a great deal of income, as Norm had mentioned, and hearing from two people that are on different sides of it on the same subject agreeing that we need to get this hotel remodel going. So, and I have seen what goes on during the cart lunches and that's down next to the library. I did witness that there was no distancing whatsoever. Tailgating and commiserating the way that people are not supposed to be doing. I agree with Marnie. Hopefully, we can move that forward with cart. One of us should reach out and speak to somebody at cart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jefferson. Okay, Mikey, did you want to continue?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Yeah, I was just to finish up thanking the citizens of Malibu. I just want to address that I know there's, there's a lot of emotions and opinions on what we're going through. All of them are valid because this is really hard. And I want to particularly address a lot of the messages I get concern visitors, overwhelming different locations, construction sites, the homeless issue, and all of that's, all of that's very valid. I think the point I want to make here is that ultimately, at the end of the day, we can only really take care of ourselves. The sheriffs are doing the best they can. I've been out and walking my dog and I've never seen so many sheriffs driving by, not in this part of Malibu. So I know they're doing their best. I talk to them quite a bit. I know our VOPs are doing their best. Everyone's out there in force. But recognize at some point, yeah, there's, there's definitely some safety issues going on. But please, 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 at the end of the day, take care of yourselves because that's ultimately what we can do. I'm glad Riva addressed the financial implications this is going to have on the city. That's not going to be a happy conversation. I've talked with Riva a bit. I, I look forward to sort of digging in to see what we can do as a city and to keep moving forward in a positive way. We have a lot of great projects we've been trying to get to, first Woolsey, now this. But never give up, never back down. So we'll keep on that. And as I talk about financial hardship, I'm still reminded of our fee waivers coming to an end and some people that I know are really trapped in a tough position. And I hope we can bring forward, at least discuss what we can do there despite our financial situation. Maybe a hardship case, or I have no idea what the mechanism could be. But I do know a few very good long-term Malibu residents are just by no fault of their own, stuck in a really tough position right now on that. Big thanks again to our sheriffs, VOP, CERT, healthcare workers, people in the markets and everything. I know it's been said a lot, but it really big thanks. And the staff and particularly Riva at the city, I've talked to Riva sometimes so many times a day. I've actually been worried about her. I know she's absolutely pushed herself to the limit on being the workaholic she is. So I just a note of appreciation there. And but take care of your health, please. And just a reminder, still, we have a little ways to go here, no matter how you feel about how this is being handled in the local area or the state or nationwide. So please everyone hang in there and and if nothing else, do it in the memory of John Bell and his family for what they've been through. And with that, my comments are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Okay, I just want to reiterate what pretty much everyone else has said. I want to thank everybody in the city, the whole community who's been doing their best to comply with stay safer at home and physical distancing. I agree, social distancing goes against our nature. I really want to thank the city, starting with Riva, our city manager and all of the city staff. It's been just a 24/7 job for many, many people. I want to thank Susan, Jerry Vandermeulen, Matt Meyerhoff has been working, I don't know how many hours. I'm sure he doesn't even know. And, and people who we don't normally see in the public eye, Mary Linden, Elizabeth Shavelson, the whole media team, everybody's just been working incredibly hard. But I really want to thank the community because this is a giant, giant team effort. And there are frustrations. I too have gotten a lot of emails from people witnessing behavior that's not safe. Everybody needs to just continue, just set the example and we're trying to get help from the sheriff. They are responding. The VOPs have been out there. You know, and the county orders are, are getting even more stringent this week with mask requirements at essential businesses and while out in public. So everybody, please comply. And I'm sure all of the workers know your employer is required to either supply you with that mask or to reimburse you for the cost of it. I've gotten a lot of emails. I've gotten phone calls. I've had a lot of people contacting me. We are trying to keep up with this and, and, you know, it's a serious situation. We're learning every day. I really want to thank CERT also. We partnered, it came together very quickly with Sean Penn and his organization Core. And immediately, Dr. Lisa Benya got involved. A lot of volunteers stepped up, CERT stepped up. And I think if you all heard, it did almost 1,200 tests the first week. Really important work and it will continue this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You can register online. There've been a lot of announcements on that. And if you haven't heard them, you can go on the city website, malibu city.org/coronavirus and find out about how to register. I want to really thank Jesse Bobbitt and his staff for putting together the virtual rec center. Most people are not used to just being at home, especially with their kids, trying to work from home. And all those things really help. We've got serious issues coming up, more testing, many issues related to homelessness. I want to thank everybody who spoke. Norm, I too met with you, as the other council members did, to look at the conversion for the hotel project. And hopefully we'll get that on the agenda soon. I know we still have short term rental to deal with. Our budget as a city, our revenue is going to be declining like many households, businesses, pretty much every agency. This is all going south. So we're going to have to deal with that. And I trust in our staff and in the council that will make the right decisions and make that work. So I think that's it. Barry, you and I have discussed the MRCA. I was on that call with several other Malibu residents. That's another area of concern and we will continue to try to stand our ground there. I think that's, that's about it for my comments. And yeah, John Bell was also a friend of mine and my family's. And I send my deepest condolences. I've been in communication with Sandy. And with, I haven't spoken to Jimmy and Billy, but our heart goes out to the whole family. And I think we all wondered who would be the first person we knew to be lost to this coronavirus. And sadly, it was John Bell, somebody who was really loved by everybody. So that concludes my comments. And yes?
Did you want to recognize Skylar?
Oh, Skylar, have you not spoken?
No, I did speak. I just had one more comment I forgot to say.
I apologize. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to put it out there to everyone that Core is definitely looking for more donations, obviously. That's the organization that's worked with our city to provide the testing. And if people can visit coreresponse.org, they can make a contribution there. Again, that's Core, C-O-R-E, response.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. An important point. Okay, we will be moving on. While I get my agenda here. Okay, we are moving on to the consent calendar.
Yes, two items have been pulled.
Okay.
Item 3A2 and 3B5.
3B5?
I make a motion to approve the agenda pulling items 3A2 and 3B5.
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote for that.
To approve the balance of the consent calendar, not to approve the agenda.
Excuse me. Yes. The balance of the contact calendar. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Wagner? I think you're on mute.
He's saying yes.
Okay, councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Prochan Pearson?
Yes, and I want to tell you a trick, Jefferson. If you push down your spacebar while you're talking, it temporarily unmutes you. Then you let it up and you go back on mute.
I just tried that at work. Thank you, Mikey. I've lost my arrow. I, I vote with the council. Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Okay, so.
Mayor, on item 3A2 that was pulled, if you'd like to hear the speaker and then if there's questions, you can certainly answer them.
Okay, please. Thank you.
We have one speaker, Joel Schwimmer.
Hello. Oh, good. Hi. Yeah, you know, I don't know whose software this is with Zoom, but it's really excellent. Thank you to whoever arranged this. And actually, you may want to consider this when times go back to normal as being a compliment to a city council meeting. It could involve more people and it's, it's pretty good. Okay, but the only, I just want to make a quick point. At the March 9th meeting where the first vote was was done on this, on this ordinance, Judy Villa Blanca brought up, let's, for the first year, have four inspections, quarterly inspections. And Skyler and Jefferson thought that was a good idea too. And every, and it was actually included in the motion. And it was voted unanimously. So I'd just like to remind everyone of that. And should that be included again in this vote or, you know, just as it was in the previous one? Thank you.
I can address that. That's that's the inspections will just be direction to staff. This is the approval of the ordinance itself. The inspections is not part of the actual amendment of the municipal code from that.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3A2?
Do we have a second?
I'll second, but I have a question. My question is, were we going to add the fine schedule in here or is it, or did we agree that it was already in the code elsewhere?
It's in the code elsewhere.
That's what Christie said.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
You do. You want me to call it?
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Mayor Ferrer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next consent item pulled is item 3B5.
We have five speakers. I'm going to list them in order they'll be called. Hamish Patterson, Leila Polito, Finn Murphy, Paula Murphy and Judy Villa Blanca. First will be Hamish Patterson.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just wanted to encourage us to pass this. I know that that looking forward, we're going to be meeting a bunch of financial hurdles with the permanent skate park. And I think it's kind of really important for us to get the temporary park solidified as being a project that's going to be completed, especially for all these children that are homebound right now. You know, I've been kind of not that excited about the temporary skate park, but you know, in light of the situation and the fact that all these children are stuck indoors, I'm 100% behind that the temporary skate park because they really need something to look forward to. And I also think that it will serve as a place for us to kind of keep our physical distance, but celebrate after this whole thing's over and and a real good a a good goal. I know it's, I know the cost overruns are are kind of somewhat little bit odd, shocking to me on on the actual equipment. I just remember, want everyone to remember that the the surfacing is for the is for the the permanent park and part of the infrastructure up there. But as far as the temporary park goes, I I hope that we can approve it since it does come out of a previously designated budget. And I don't believe it'll have any fiscal impact. And I I really hope that we can get this done. Like I said, it it seems to be a very important thing because I know with with my children, they're kind of being affected the hardest by this. And and I know all those skaters are stuck at home and for them to know that that we're moving forward with this and giving them somewhere to go when this is all over, I think is a a real feather in the city's cap. And it's something that we can really all get behind of. And after this, after we get to come out of our houses, we can have a big party and celebrate the city of Malibu and celebrate the community. And really just do something fantastic. And I hope that we can pass this tonight. And I appreciate everybody who's done their hard work. And Jesse, Jesse and Kristen down at the at the, I don't even, do you know, you know where you guys are at, but I just want to thank you for all the work and the continued work of the city on this project. And I'm looking forward to doing a little bit of skateboarding when we get to get out of the house. So thank you.
Thank you, Hamish.
Next, we'll hear from Leila Polito.
Um, I'd just like to thank the council for providing this opportunity to speak via Zoom. But I'd like to begin by referring us all back to the last meeting where I did some calculations on the price of the square footage lost along the border of the temporary park. This $72,000 was the equivalent value that Mr. Gillen paid for the land that he acquired. And I suggested that he donate this amount since his request diminished our square footage. If you recall, there was a very animated yes response from Mr. Gillen with a promise to drop off the check the next day. Last time I checked, this money has not been received. I would like that to be noted publicly. Secondly, I understand that the new anticipated cost of the temporary park has required the additional ask of $350,000. It might be tempting to start thinking about cutting costs here, like talking about, like taking out features. But I want to give you, but I wanted to give you the perspective of a skater kid who has been cooped up in her house for the last four weeks and the foreseeable future. The skating community that I'm a part of is very social. Apart from the time spent doing schoolwork and other sports, I'm hanging out with my friends. Social distancing and distance learning has been a really difficult transition for all of us. Looking forward to the skate park is our light at the end of the tunnel. If we start cutting features because of the budgeting, it will be a serious blow to our already deflated world. It means more to us now than ever. The city had $1 million pledged from the developer and additional $600,000 was donated anonymously with the help of my friends and I who wrote the family letters and Mr. Gillen, who will hopefully come through with his promise, dedicated an additional $72,000. If the temporary park costs seven, $650,000, that leaves us with $1,022,000 remaining for the permanent park. I'm confident that the skating community in Malibu will pony up the cost differential. I'm only 14 years old, but I have $300 saved up that I'm willing to pledge right now. This is how much this means to me. Let's start getting others involved and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila.
Next, we'll hear from Finn Murphy.
Hello, everyone. Hope you are all staying safe. I've looked over Jesse's report and I saw that California skate parks is the lowest bidder and I want to express my full support for them. And I just want to say that they're a great choice. In past meetings, I've spoken about their amazing concrete parks. But they also make amazing wood parks too. For example, the Vance Park series, a famous contest series built by California skate parks, where they build huge skate bowls in very short amount of time that are incredible. They look so good that if I wasn't telling you right now that they were wood, you would think they're as smooth and look just like concrete. A great example is some of the Huntington Beach stops of the series. They make an amazing wood bowl on the beach and I've been watching for years and I only just realized that it was wood because it looks so smooth and flawless. Their temporary skate parks are in fact so high quality that they're making them for the Olympics. I would also like to know how much the skate park will be used and that it is totally worth it to go over, a bit over budget. All these kids have been cooped up inside forever now, it feels like. And it would mean the world to us to get to get this done by summer, no matter what. I think California skate parks should do a great job of getting it done quickly. All of the components of the park are important and we shouldn't take out anything to save money. Firstly, because it would delay the park a ton if we change anything. And the bowl isn't especially important because with Malibu being such a surf-oriented town, it is great cross-training to, is great cross-training to have a bowl because you use the same motions as surfing. So I think it's super important to keep that for our town. And also, of course, all the kids are super excited for all of the obstacles and especially the bowl. I hope you vote in favor for moving forward of the temporary park. I hope that you're all staying safe and staying happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Finn.
The Saturday last speaker, Heather. Now next, we'll hear from Paula Murphy. Okay, next we'll hear from Judy Villa Blanca.
So, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I just wanted to quickly express again my strong support for the skate park, the temporary skate park moving forward as a member of the Parks and Rec Commission. And is coming from a family where I have two skaters in my family. And as Finn said, I also would strongly support California skate parks as doing the build. I think they were a terrific group. And I think they understand the issues in Malibu as well as having the ability to build a great park. I realize there are going to be budget issues with the pandemic. I wanted to point it also that we also have $23,000 in the city funding in addition to the million and what's left of it from the case project. This 23,000 was donated some years ago, about nine years ago, Hamish could correct me, but and is also money available for the skate park. And having the privilege to get to know the skater community, including all the speakers who you just heard, I have no doubt that they have the enthusiasm and skills and the will to raise whatever money the city needs to complete the park. So I think that says it all and I hope you will vote to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Paula, are you back? Paula Murphy. It doesn't look like it. And that's the end of our speaker list, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, council members.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3B5?
Yeah. Can I second and ask a question? Riva, is there a revised timeline based on the pandemic pandemic for completing the temporary part?
So we have Jesse Bobbitt on. If he could please answer the questions, because yes, there is.
Good evening, members of City Council, Mayor Ferrer, members of City Council. There is a revised timeframe. We've been working with our designer, American Ramp Company, regarding the proposals when we put out the notice for bids to actually get proposals back for this project. And we have heard back that there is a five to six week delay in the production process for Skate Lite, which is the surface material that actually goes on the equipment. So our plan, as as Riva noted earlier in her report, was that the asphalt, the work on the asphalt lot began today. And so what we'll do is we'll try and plan and build everything we can to get ready while we place that order for the Skate Lite so that as soon as it comes in, we can place it on top. But our best guess is probably somewhere between six and eight weeks if we had to put a number on it.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Any other questions, council members? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Heather, will you do the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Mayor Ferrer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 4A. That's the temporary moratorium on foreclosures and residential and commercial evictions for non-payment of rent during the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay, do we have a staff report?
Sure, mayor. I don't have a lot to add from the staff report on here. But I think we're all familiar with the depth and scope that COVID-19 has had its impacts on the economy and here in Malibu. And what this proposes to do is to do what another, others, other cities are doing and take action to prevent foreclosures and evictions from happening during this period of time, which would cause people to to have to potentially be put on the street or to have to deal with an eviction and to violate the number of these stay-at-home orders in order to deal with the fallout from those situations. The city's ordinance is, some aspects you want, I want to see on this that are different from what's in place from the judicial council and from the governor's order, is this will cover both commercial and residential evictions and also foreclosure situations. It also significantly provides a six-month period to become current after after the state of emergency expires. The the action is also retroactive to the start of the emergency so long as you are in possession of the property still. And will continue through as long as there's a local emergency in place here in Malibu. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer, but that's, that's the basis of what we're doing here and what's different from some of the other measures that are in place as well.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Okay, Mikey.
I'd like to chat about this one for a minute if I could. So I I think it's really important people understand how this works. And honestly, the math on this is pretty daunting. And people need to be very careful here. Let me, just give me a second on this. So if you're a commercial business, if you own a store, and let's just say you don't pay your rent for three months and then you have to open your store and pay back, pay your rent and pay back the three months in the next six months, you better have a really good plan. I'm, to be honest, hoping that if that's where you're at, that you've done a lot more, that you've also looked at the disaster loan, that you've also looked at the PPP loan, that you've talked to your banker. And I really hope you're talking to your landlord. Because you, everyone needs to work together to get through this. Business is not going to go back to 100% day one at all. So I just, I just want to urge you, we don't want to lose our businesses. And this is, you know, this is real and this is tough. Do some planning. Really get, you know, really know your numbers and know how you're going to make this work. Because even with the government helping and they are stepping forward to some pretty unprecedented things that I've never heard of before, you really, really have to have a plan right now. And the same goes with residential. It's the same thing. If you're out of work three months, then you have six months to pay back, three months of rent. Don't have a plan there too. So be active on this, whether you are renting, whether it's a business or your home. Really, really talk to the people you need to talk, talk to on this. Really have a plan. I just can't stress that enough, or six months are going to come up and you just, it's just not going to work. It's not going to work. The numbers don't work. And I also sincerely hope on the state and federal level that our best and brightest minds come through with some more solutions in this area. They're doing a lot, but pay attention, this is going to be really tricky and this is really important. And I just, just wanted to, I just wanted to surface that. So thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I just jump in and emphasize and give some context to what the mayor Proton just said because it's important? The reason that we have the authority to do what we're doing and really the underlying government purpose for this ordinance is to keep everybody in place. The last thing we want is for people to be moving, whether it's in your commercial tenancy or residential. We want everybody in place. This affects both evictions and foreclosures for that purpose. Because our government purpose here is to stop the spread of the coronavirus. And the way that we have been able in California to help do that is by keeping everyone in place. So that's the, that's what we've done. And I know that there are economic hardships that come with having to shelter in place. And the city has much more limited ability to help with that directly. We can't interfere with the contract. We don't have the power to go and change somebody's rent or forgive somebody's rent. Or the next stage, you know, forgive the mortgage payments that the landlord would have to pay. So we can't disrupt that. We did want to acknowledge that it is a problem and see if we could at least deal with the six-month period to give someone some leniency. And we are encouraging people to, as And we are encouraging people to, as exactly what the Mayor Pro Tem said, to talk with their landlords and to start to work out those terms right now and check on SBA loans. And I know that Riva and our lobbyists are active at work trying to come up with bigger solutions, but this is what the city can do, and it's why we're recommending these actions now.
And just, and just quickly, the city has put out fantastic information to help businesses and people with the residence, and so has the chamber, so both have great resources, and I urge people to check those out, too.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Yes, Jefferson?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to let everybody know that watching your EIDL applications are not too difficult. I was able to navigate it and complete it myself. As for the three P plans, some of the larger banks, two of the top five have declined to go into the three P program, which is the, the plan for taking care of the paychecks in your business. So this is going to be difficult. However, negotiations is not out of sight, but stay in the negotiations and keep active with it. Don't give up, and somehow we'll prevail and make it through this next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a motion to approve item four.
I'd like to second it, and I appreciate the, the comments by both of our former small business owners, former and current local small business owners. I think those are important comments you guys made, so I'd like to second this.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Heather, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember?
The title?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure. Did you say you had to repeat the title? Oh, Trevor.
I can do it. All right, so this is a motion to approve ordinance number forty-six, four sixty-three U, an urgency ordinance of the city of Malibu enacting a temporary moratorium on foreclosures and evictions due to non-payment of rent by residential and commercial tenants impacted by the COVID-19 virus, finding the same exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency. Does that reflect your motion in the second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Yes, I want to point out it's still on a small business amount, when you are now looking at world headquarters right on your screen.
Mayor Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to item six A. The Malibu Community Assistance Resource Team CART General Fund Grant.
Mayor, I'll give the report for this. When we first approved the general fund grants for this fiscal year, CART was awarded a thousand dollars towards the security program that they had intended to run as part of their meals program. Since the grant was awarded, it, they realized that they actually didn't need the security, though they are still providing those meals. And so they have requested to redirect those funds towards resources that they plan on purchasing as part of the next Homeless Connect Day. Currently, that's scheduled for middle of June. Obviously, that could change given the current situation, but we wanted to bring this forward to the council to see if there was a consensus to redirect the funds to different uses for the same organization. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Riva. Council members, any questions?
Is there any public speakers?
No, there are not.
Okay, I don't have an issue with that, and I'd make a motion to approve item six A to allow them to grant the funds to something else. And I would also request that they definitely implement some sort of social distancing with whatever's going on down near the library at the time being.
I'll second.
Follow up with that. We have been working with everybody involved, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember?
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are moving on now to item seven A. This is regarding the census. And this is my item. This is just a, an item in support of recognizing the importance of the 2020 census and supporting helping to ensure a complete, fair, and accurate count of all Californians and to direct staff to use the city's communications network to urge all residents to complete the census online according to the instructions provided in the Census 2020 questionnaire that was mailed to each Malibu resident by the US Census Bureau. And I'll just add, I did this a couple of weeks ago. It takes between five and 10 minutes. And also, just this afternoon, I got an email from the US Department of Commerce Secretary regarding the current census. And with what's going on with the pandemic, there is no field work at this time. Normally, there is a combination of field work and online census, answering the census. Right now, it's online only, and because of the suspension with the pandemic, the deadlines are being extended. The field offices are expected to be reactivated beginning June first. That's the date given right now. I don't know if that will change as this develops. I just want everybody to realize how important it is to answer the census, and really easy to do online.
Mayor?
Do we have, yes?
You have one speaker?
Okay, thank you.
Ben Stuber?
That'd be me right here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. I don't think I can start a camera on this, but that's okay. Anyway, I don't know if my time has started. So once again, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Farrar, for bringing this forward to every, everybody before the Malibu City Council and the city of Malibu. I am a semi-regular at Malibu City Hall on, on, on my day job, but on the side, I'm working to help with Ventura County and advising their census efforts to complete their complete count for Census 2020 as well. And I've been tracking the response rates lately. I'm kind of alarmed looking at the city of Malibu's response rates. As of April 12th, which is the most recent reporting period, there's currently a twenty-five-point-two percent response rate within the city of Malibu, which in comparison to the sixty percent in Agora Hills and, as well as fifty-one-point-seven percent in Calabasas. And that was over the past weekend. There's definitely a lot of work that needs to be done. Wanted to also share some tips that I've been sharing within Ventura County as well. First of all, make sure you look at the track information, too, within the response rates as well, because citywide, there is more than likely going to be at least one, if not two tracks that are going to drag down things, too. And right now, West Malibu is that track reporting as of yesterday afternoon nineteen-point-four percent response rate. Now, some, some tracks are doing a lot better, like Pep, the Pepperdine area, Latigo Canyon area, and Big Rock in East Malibu, thirty-three percent and thirty-one-point-eight percent respectively. So don't just take the citywide response rate with, well, not completely with a grain of salt, of salt. Take a look at the tracks as well. Apologies for the nerves there. Also, take a look at your hard-to-count maps, too, that are available, too, through the California Census. This is a fourteen-variable calculation that includes factors like internet broadband access, vacant housing units. All the factors are present, and if you want me to, I can send an email later on how this was calculated. That's another major factor to take into account as well. And also, this is not just for city staff to monitor, for all citizens, too. Anybody can access these through both the California Census website and through the US Census Bureau website, and I'd be willing to help you all out in whatever way I can. So that is all I can share with you guys at this time. Thank you very much again. If you've got any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ben. Council members, any questions?
Karen? I just want to thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope that everybody completes their census, and I make a motion to adopt this resolution twenty-dash-fifteen.
I'll second it. I've already done mine, too. It's easy.
And I've done mine, and I know, Ben, there's no way to go back and forth, but I just, I have a feeling you said West Malibu, and that would happen to be where a lot of houses burned down. So I'm wondering what the impact might be there, and I don't know if there is one, but I've sent mine back, and I'm in West Malibu, so thanks for bringing that up. That was, that was great public speaking. Thank you.
Okay, Jefferson?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Quick comment. Ours was completed before the first deadline, and I just really need to reach out to everybody. It's not that difficult. We just got to do our five minutes, 10 minutes, and stick up for our city. This, this reflects poorly unless we get higher numbers. We really need to get on this, and appreciate you bringing this forward, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Okay, any other council comments, or should we go ahead? We have a motion and a second. Heather, would you like to do the roll call?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to item seven B. Jefferson, this is your item. Would you like to discuss it?
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that. Briefly, this is additional funding to finish the purchase of the Triangle Ranch. A letter of support and a letter of enthusiasm from the city would greatly help Senator Stern and Assembly Member Bloom with the funding of this. It does say MRCA all over it, but it's not going in anybody's general fund. If you know where I'm headed, it goes directly for the purchase of the property and leaving this open space. It's very valuable to the people in Liberty Canyon, Calabasas, and Agora to keep this open area. This would be the area that the, eventually, the overpass will affect the large cat population in the Santa Monica Mountains. This open space is very necessary. It would have been shopping malls and homes. Hopefully, we can get this financing package together, help everybody else out on the other side of the hill. Also, for emergency response, it's a lot less congestion when you have open space instead of homes and shopping malls. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, any other council comments?
Just would like to make a motion to support sending a letter.
Second.
A quick, quick question. Jefferson, is this item funded, or what's going to happen with the pandemic if it is?
So the, the funding is something that they're going to procure. So with the Senate and the Assembly behind it, and our letters of support to Agora, Calabasas, the COG, it shows unilateral support for the purchase of this property. So the funding is coming from outside sources. Riva has the dial on that. But this is just to send that letter of support to show that the COG is very interested in keeping this open space.
So it's my understanding that this is funding that was originally slated to be in the state's budget for next year as part of a general fund appropriation. The state is in the process of redoing their entire budget. Basically, what they said is we threw the old one out and started again. So the may revise version of the state's budget should be out in a couple of weeks, and we would know at that time whether there was still funding as part of a line item for this. But that's the only information I have on, on this funding.
Okay, do we have any, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Heather, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, that is the conclusion of the meeting. It is now eight twenty-six PM, and I would like to adjourn again in memory of John Bell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Everybody else?
Thank all of you again.